Good evening and welcome to the February 2nd, 2021 Mainland Planning Commission Meeting. To start with, we'd like to ask you to join us in the invocation and pledge.
Y'all bow your heads, please. Thank you for this opportunity to gather together, to do business for each other and for the county. Thank you for this group that's been brought together. Thank you for those in the county who help us every day take care of our properties and our lands. For it be in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to review the meeting procedures for the Mainland Planning Commission. The planning staff presents the application request to the Planning Commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to the zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their requests to the Planning Commission. It is the responsibility of the applicant to make the presentations on request and to address any conditions either or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings. Public comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Site plans. Public comments on site plans will be limited to 15 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of three minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman may terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Any planning commission announcements? Folks, how many of you here are here tonight for the rezone for the Southern Retreat RV Park? Kind of give you a heads up. The applicant has asked that this item be deferred to the March 2nd meeting. That'll give him time to try to work out some concessions with the residents of Majestic Oaks. And it looks like right now that that request will probably be granted. And so the public hearing and the future land use amendment and the rezone will all be moved to the March 2nd meeting, just to kind of give you a heads up. If you, you know, if you want to stay, you can. If you want to go, then, you know, you can certainly do so. Anyway, having said that, the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the special call meeting held January 6th, 2021, and the regular meeting held January 12th, 2021, subject to any necessary corrections. Commissioners?
Chairman, I offer a motion to approve the minutes of the January 6th and the January 12th meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Number two, brief training session for new mainland planning commissioners presented by the planning and zoning division staff. Ms. Leach?
Good evening, Commissioners. Stephanie Leach, Planning Manager. The chairman had asked that I do just a brief training session for the new commissioners. We did something similar with the Islands Planning Commission earlier in January, or at their last meetings in January. I will say what we are looking at right now is to schedule, whether it's a joint planning commission meeting or whether it's just a training session for new commissioners. We are looking at scheduling something with our county attorney to provide a lot of that training for you. We don't have a date for that yet, so we'll be in touch on that. But what I wanted to do was just for the new commissioners, so you have a little bit of an overview of kind of what the process is before you're seeing an application and then kind of some of your role, some of your aspects of your role as a planning commissioner tonight. So the development review process, just when you have the applications that are in front of you this evening, have all gone through what we call the development review team. And this is a group of different agencies and different county departments that get together on a weekly basis and go through all of the active applications that are in that are in the pipeline. So who we have as part of the team that's reviewing everything before it comes to you is we've got engineering, public works, joint water and sewer, environmental health, fire department, planning and zoning, building inspection, GIS, and mapping, and our airport And then these are, there's a lot of detail in these, so we'll email these to you after the meeting, so you can take a look at these. But these are some great kind of flow charts of our different application process, you know, kind of from start to finish. When someone applies for an application, you know, what are the steps that it follows as it goes through our process before it either gets final administrative approval or whether it gets, goes to a planning commission or board of commissioners, whoever is the final decision-making body. So this first one is for our site plan application process, and the next one is rezoning, and these are conditional and special uses. And for the Mainland Planning Commission, those are primarily the applications you will see. The only thing really in addition to that that you may have as an item would be amendments to the zoning or subdivision code. So we call those text amendments, and so those would follow a similar process as we do for rezones. So the Mainland Planning Commission just this last year adopted a public comment policy. So the beginning of the meeting, Chairman Circlan did read out the comment policy in the public hearing procedures, so for anyone who wants to comment. Prior to this past year, the only items that the planning commission would take public comment on were actual public hearing items, and those were items that in our code, as well as the state codes, require this body to accept comments from the public. So this past year, you all did adopt a public comment policy that for site plans, you now take comments on those. So you limit, you limit those to 15 minutes for each side. So proponents get 15 minutes and opponents get 15 minutes total. And then each speaker has a maximum of three minutes. So the way this differs is for site plans, this is what you follow, but then if it's a public hearing item, which are shown separately on your agendas, those are actually 30 minutes each side and five minutes per speaker. Also in this last year, year and a half, the planning commissions, both IPC and MPC, had some joint work sessions where there were some amendments to the bylaws. And so this is really what governs your operations. So I know at your last meeting, you did election of officers, so you know how to do that now for the new folks. And then we also, in the bylaws, talk about staff reports. So you did notice in for the new folks, for your packets, about a week prior to each meeting, we send you via email. We only do electronic packets now, but we send you a copy of the agenda, the minutes, and then the staff planner working on the projects will do a staff report and then include all of the, all this, all the, I guess, supporting documentation that the applicant has submitted, as well as any supporting documents that we feel is important for you all to know about. So you'll receive a report of the development review team review. So we call that the review history. So you'll see what all the comments that the development review team had and just how, you know, how they reviewed it before it came to you. And then in meetings, we do have our regular meetings. We do have all of these up on our website. We have a main county calendar that lists all of these meeting dates for your regular monthly meetings. And then we also have a calendar. I'm not sure if we, Janet, did we put a copy of the calendar in their packets? Perfect. Okay. So your orientation packet that you received, you received a copy of the calendar, and if anyone needs another copy, feel free to let Janet or me know, and we'll get that to you. Special meetings, these are called at the request of the chairman. So these, occasionally we do have a special meeting if there's an application coming up that is on a certain timeline. For example, this last month, we had an economic development project that had a special call meeting. We also may call these when we might have a work session item. I anticipate a number of those this year because we are updating our zoning code that we've been working on for a couple of years, and we're really kind of in, hopefully, the final stretches of that. So we anticipate calling some special meetings where you'll really kind of get into the zoning code and work on that. And then just for quorum and voting, we, so at least four members need to be present to have a quorum. And then also for action on applications for it to move forward, it needs to be four, four votes. And then for your rules of order, we do follow Robert's rules of order. And I mentioned just at the start, we are looking at scheduling some additional training, and our county attorney would review Georgia Open Records and Open Meetings Act. And meeting procedures, conflict of interest, and ethics are the primary topics that he would most likely go over. And so we'll be in touch in the future to see who all will be interested in taking part in that training. And then just kind of things that are coming up in 2021. We started the zoning code update back in 2019, and right now, our consultant, TSW, is really in the trenches drafting those codes right now. And so we anticipate in the spring of 2021, we will have some planning commission work sessions. The planning commissions are also the steering committee for this project, and we'll be in touch with you all on when those dates will be scheduled. But it'll be sometime, most likely late spring, that you'll see those. So those are just, that was a very brief training, just a few things to kind of touch on before we get into the first meeting for our new commissioners. Are there any questions on any of that before we move on?
Commissioners, anything? Okay.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Steffi. Okay. Public hearing zoning decisions. ZM 4598, 554 Honeygale Road rezoned. Request to rezone 554 Honeygale Road, parcel ID 0306937, from the General Industrial Zoning District to the Forest Agricultural Zoning District. David and Judy Magnus, owner.
Good evening. I'm Maurice Postal, Planning and Zoning Division. The applicants are requesting to rezone the parcel from General Industrial to Forest Agricultural. Every other lot on Honeygale Road is in FA zoning, except for this parcel and the Altama Plantation tract at the end of the road. The parcel was rezoned from FA to General Industrial in 85 for use as a junkyard, but the junkyard had already been abandoned when the applicant moved in in 2002. And the applicants have resided in a mobile home on the site since they purchased the property, and they intend on continuing the one-family residential use of the property. This is a zoning map showing FA all around, except for this one parcel. And this is the picture of the site showing its residential use, definitely not an industrial site. And these are your options tonight. Recommend approval, recommend with conditions, defer, recommend denial. And we're recommending approval of the application as presented. And the applicant is here tonight.
Thank you, Maurice. Any questions for the staff? Okay. Would the applicant come forward? Okay, would the applicant come forward? You'll state your name for the record, please.
Judy Magnus.
Okay. What do you desire the commission to do?
To change it to that agricultural residential, or whatever that is.
Forest agriculture.
Forest agriculture.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak in support of ZM 4598? Hearing none, seeing none. Anyone here to speak in opposition to ZM 4598? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of application ZM 4598 as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Yes, sir, thank you.
ZM 4589, Gateway Alpine rezoned. Request to amend the existing planned development district. ZM 3579, the Glenn County-sponsored amendment will revise the canal road setback in the planned development text from 35 feet to 20 feet to accommodate 15 feet of right-of-way acquisition. 515 Gateway Center Boulevard, parcel number 03-27197, Pamela Thompson, Community Development Director, Agent for Wayne Neal, County Commissioner, applicant. Maurice?
Maurice Postal, Planning and Zoning, again. This is currently the site of the Shine and Go Car Wash. It was built in 2018. At the time it was constructed, it was in conformance with all local ordinances, including the PD's canal road setback requirements. But the county is widening Canal Road as a SPOS project, and a portion of the project runs along the front edge along Canal Road of the Shine and Go, and the project is currently in the planning, design, and engineering phase. The owner of Shine and Go is willing to convey the necessary 15 feet of right-of-way for the project, but had concerns that the transfer of property would make the current Shine and Go Car Wash non-conforming with the Canal Road setback. The county wishes to amend the PD text for this property to reduce the required setback from Canal Road from 35 to 20 feet, so that the Shine and Go Car Wash continues to remain in compliance with the PD's setback requirements. And Section 1103B of the zoning ordinance allows the county to initiate rezonings. And this is the entirety of the change that the county is proposing, just deleting the 35 feet and adding 20 feet for the Canal Road right-of-way setback. And this zoning map showing the Shine and Go Car Wash here, and this is the rest of the Gateway Alpine Plan Development. This is Canal Road. And this blue area here is the right-of-way that the county will be taking, and this red line right here is the current setback, and it'll stay the setback with this change, with this recommended change to the PD text. So, the Shine and Go Car Wash right here will stay in conformance to the setback requirements. And this shows the area that the county will be taking along here, the widened Canal Road. And you can recommend approval to the board, recommend approval with conditions, defer the action, or recommend denial of the rezoning, and we're recommending approval of the rezoning as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Postal. Any questions for the staff?
Maurice?
Yes.
That 20-foot setback is going to go all the way down Canal, is that correct? Or is it just in that location?
Well, yeah, it's along the Canal Road right-of-way.
Okay.
I mean, this red line right here.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I guess my question would be similar. Would this be the only business that would be affected in this manner?
Actually, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are only two lots in this entire planned development. The Shine and Go is one of them, and they're the only one affected by this issue.
Any other questions for staff? All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak in support of ZM 4589, please come forward. Hearing none, seeing none. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to ZM 4589, please come forward. Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners? Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, please, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of application ZM 4589 as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of ZM 4589 approval signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. ZM 4322, we'll take each one of these individually. Southern Retreat RV Park Future Land Use Management Map Amendment to amend a vision Glenn County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map from the low-density residential land use category to the commercial land use category for approximately 34 acres located at 7345 Blythe Island Highway, parcel number 02-00498, Chris Amos, CS-EC Incorporated, Agent for Mario Garcia, applicant, and Bow Power Incorporated, owner.
I'll introduce Chris Amos, who's the agent for the applicant. I know he wanted to say something.
Well, this is another item we'd like to request deferral on until the March meeting. The reason for the deferral is that we had a meeting with the neighbors last Saturday at the restaurant that's at the existing RV park there, and there were some concessions requested, and most of them agreed to by the developer. And one of those involves changes in the site plan, which hasn't been finished yet. And so, we wanted everybody to have a chance to review that before we had the public hearing. And we're trying to take their concerns into consideration and mitigate those concerns by adjusting the site plan, and some of the concessions were on operations in the park, lighting, speed limits, fencing, those kinds of things. So, we want to have everybody, we want everybody to have a chance to look at that before we bring it back to you in a month. But we also believe that it's appropriate to do both the future land use map amendment and the rezoning at the same time.
Yes, we agree. And thank you for trying to work things out with the residents out there in Majestic Oaks. I know they appreciate it, as does the planning commission.
And we are having another meeting with them in a week or two, as soon as all this other stuff gets done. Before we come here, we're having another meeting at the restaurant to try to...
Are y'all buying the food, or is it...
No, he did. No, he did buy the food.
Oh, well, okay. All right, Mr. Amos, stick around, we ain't through. All right, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we defer ZM 4322 until the March MPC meeting.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. ZM 4322, Southern Retreat RV Park rezoned. Request to rezone approximately 34 acres located at 7345 Blythe Island Highway from General Residential to Planned Development District, parcel ID 02-00498. The applicant proposes to expand the adjacent recreational vehicle park. Chris Amos, CS-EC Incorporated, Agent for Mario Garcia, applicant, and Bow Power Incorporated, owner.
And we would ask to defer this item as well.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to defer ZM 4322 rezoned till our March meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to defer ZM 4322 to the March 2nd meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. And at this time, I'll ask for the commission to defer the public hearing on this till the March 2nd meeting also.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we defer the public hearing for ZM 4322 to the March meeting.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. All right, moving right along. Site plan, slight site plan approval. SP 4395, Superior Cleaners, consider the site plan approval for the construction of a new 2,990 square foot commercial parking structure at 151 Newman Drive, parcel number 03-14928, Chris Amos, CS-EC Incorporated, Agent for C&amp;E Properties LLC, Eric Arnold, owner and applicant.
This is SP 4395, Superior Cleaners. They are requesting a new 2,990 square foot commercial building. There is an existing building on the site currently that's about 1,100 square feet, so this would be an additional building. They do plan to do primarily storage of vehicles and equipment for their business. So, they do not plan to have an office, so there's no restrooms or other facilities that would support an office, and so they are not providing parking that would be associated with an office either. This is primarily an industrial area, so they are asking for a modification to the type E buffer that would typically be required along the public road. So, they do not plan to, or they are requesting not to plant any landscaping in the type E. So, here's just an aerial view of the property where you can see the existing building. And there it is right here. This is the zoning map. These are the elevations of the proposed building. And this is the site plan, so there acts as off of Newman Drive. And these are your possible actions, and staff is recommending approval of the application tonight. I happen to answer any questions.
Stephanie, the buffer, it appears to me from looking at this that there are not any buffers, is that correct, in all of this?
That is correct, yeah. There are no buffers proposed on the project, and the area, most of the buildings have been there for some time, most likely constructed before the county required buffers, so they're really, you know, you don't really see buffers along the roadway now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Applicant, come forward, please.
Thank you. Once again, it's Chris Amos with CS-EC. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, and we request that you approve the application as submitted.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Amos. This is a public hearing for the site plan approval. Anyone here wishing to speak in support of the application, please come forward. Hearing none, seeing none. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve SP 4395 as presented.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving SP 4395, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Amos. SP 4579, J&amp;P Bait and Tackle. Consider a site plan approval for the placement of two modular buildings for use as a bait and tackle business located at 7267 Blythe Island Highway, parcel number 02-00624. Jamie Cruz, JP, J&amp;P Bait and Tackle, applicant and agent for Michael and Catherine Wilson, Wilson Living Trust owners. Ms. Leach?
Thank you. This is SP 4579, J&amp;P Bait and Tackle. So, this is approximately six acres on Blythe Island Highway. There currently are two modular buildings that have been brought onto the site. They are currently unoccupied, and the business is not operating out of them yet, so they have been sitting there pending site plan approval from the planning commission. So, they do intend to sell bait and tackle out of the buildings. So, the property is planned development, it's GC 4972, so this is an older PD text from 1972. It does state that a commercial is allowed because the codes and the section numbers have changed over the years. In 1972, Section 707, that's referenced in the PD text, was the general commercial zoning district, so general commercial and retail is allowed on the site per the PD. And the two modular buildings, one of them is 15 by 40, the other is 13 by 32, so one would be primarily for retail sales, and the other would be storage for the business. So, here is the property where the star is located. This is Anchor Drive right here, and this is Tide Water right here. So, these are photos of the, this is standing on Blythe Island Highway looking towards the property. Those top two are the modular buildings. The bottom left hand is looking south towards Tide Water, and then this other photo on the bottom right hand is looking north, and there is a turn, there is a turn lane in the southbound lane on Blythe Island Highway that turns into this, to this site as well as Tide Water. This is the site plan they proposed. And just zoomed in, they do have some parking shown on the site, and they also have, for larger boat trailers, they do have parking in the back here, and then these would be just for passenger vehicles. So, they are requesting a modification to the buffer. They are required to do a type E all along Blythe Island Highway, so that is a 10-foot type E buffer. And the type E buffer requirements is a mix of landscaping with trees, as well as kind of a continuous hedge of shrubs. So, the applicant is requesting to do, to plant the hedge along Blythe Island Highway, but he would like to have a modification where the trees are not required. So, the applicant is a blueberry farmer, and so he was planting on, planning on planting blueberry bushes along there, which does meet our requirement for a continuous hedge in a 10-foot buffer. So, he would like to be able to do that and then not do the trees. And, you know, again, kind of like in the previous project, a lot of the projects along Blythe Island, you know, are older, they were done before we had buffer requirements. So, of course, there's a, you know, mix of buffers and no buffers that you see along the highway. But the tree requirement in type E would be one large deciduous tree every 50 lineal feet, and one small deciduous tree every 30 lineal feet, so that's what would not be planted if you all did accept the modification. These are the, your proposed actions or possible actions, and staff is recommending approval of the application with a modification to the buffer that would include a continuous hedge without the trees. So, feel free to let me know if you have any questions, and I know the applicant's here this evening, if you have any questions of him.
Any questions for staff, Commissioners? I know Mr., one of our previous Commissioners, Gary Neville, he'd be happy about the trees.
Yes, I know.
Please, is that the buffer? Is that a request for the county, or did the applicant actually say they wanted to place a buffer there?
So, the county requires a 10-foot type E along any road where there's public access, so by code, he would be required to do the full type E along Blythe Island Highway. So, the applicant did request to plant the blueberry bushes instead of doing the trees, or, you know, just do the bushes and not the trees, so he did request a change to that requirement. And by, and by code, the planning commission does have the ability and the authority to modify buffers. So, in a lot of cases, if someone wants to change a code requirement, they'd be required to apply for a variance to go through the Board of Appeals, but this is one of the few areas where the planning commission does have the ability to modify the requirement.
There is already an existing buffer down Anchor Drive, correct?
Down Anchor Drive. Yeah, there is a line of trees. I don't know if this show, yep, this does show it. Yeah, existing natural buffer, that's correct, yeah, along Anchor Drive. And they are, they're showing that as maintaining it.
Any other questions, Commissioner? Any other questions? Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Steffi. Would the applicant come forward?
Hey there, I'm Jeremy Cruz with J&amp;P Bait and Tackle.
I guess you want us to approve this?
Pretty pleased.
I have a question. Not being real familiar with blueberry bushes, how high do they get?
15 foot if we let them. We usually keep them heads back, so the blueberries come from the new growth you get every year. But you can let them go.
Now, is, will this, like, during the wintertime, will these be, would they die?
No, so they, they.
They thrive year-round?
Partially deshed, but they'll be, they'll live right on, yes.
So there'd be somewhat of a buffer there?
Yes.
Year-round?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners?
Sir, do you prefer the buffer or not the buffer?
It would be easier for us without the buffer, but I asked Miss Stephanie that if we have to put a buffer, if we could go with something like this.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Preferably, I would rather not, but I'll do whatever you guys need us to do to get it going.
One of the problems is that if we start, you know, letting this applicant not have a buffer, then it's hard for us when the next applicant comes forward.
Right, I understand.
And he doesn't want a buffer, and then all of a sudden, the county ordinances that we have in place are virtually of no use at all, because the Planning Commission has waived the buffer requirements. So that's the reason, that, I hope you understand that.
Sure.
We'd like there to be some type of buffer there, so that there's a continuous, you know, compliance with the county ordinances.
Yes, I understand.
Mr. Chairman, there's not any buffers anywhere, I'm very familiar with this area, there's not any buffers anywhere that I can think of along Highway 303 that conform to what they're asking for. Is, am I wrong, Ms. Leaf?
No, that, yeah, that sounds correct. Most of the development has occurred in previous years prior to the buffer.
This is in, this is in my district, and I personally wouldn't want to have a business with a buffer in front of it. I want people, I want it to be exposed business so people can see it. You'll be surprised if there's a buffer across there. How many people going to drive by JP Bait and Tackle and never look over and ever think it's a bait and tackle shop? That's.
Yes. But we'll comply to whatever you guys want us to, but.
We understand, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I agree with you, Mr. Boatright.
I tend to agree with Commissioner Boatright as well. I rode down that road today, as you well know, Commissioner Strickland. I don't, I would be okay without a buffer.
Me too, sir.
I would as well.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in support of SP 4579, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of SP 4579, please come forward. Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
I want to make a motion to approve this without the buffer.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of SP 4579 without the buffer, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Five to one. All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
SP 4588, 205 Perry Lane Road, The Mystery Plot. Consider Site Plan Approval for the construction of a new 7,860 square foot office building at 205 Perry Lane Road, parcel number 03-05488. Ryan Moore, Golden Isles Development Authority Agent for Glen County, owner. Mr. Postal?
Chairman Strickland, you took my punchline, but I'll continue anyway. The applicant's requesting Site Plan Approval for the construction of a new 7,860 square foot office building at the corner of US 341 and Perry Lane Road. This is the former site of the Georgia Patrol Station. The state gave the property to the county back in 2014, and the site was rezoned from forest agricultural to general commercial back in January. And as you read in the paper, this is an economic development project, and the eventual SE of the property isn't nationally known company that will operate a local office at the site, but as you read in the paper, the company has not been announced. And the GIS department hasn't had time to update the map, but as I said, this was rezoned to general commercial last month. And this is the site as it is today, completely vacant. And this is the site plan, showing the office building and the parking. And you'll be happy to know the applicant's not requesting a waiver from Type E buffers. And this is the one-story office building. And your options, of course, are to approve, approve with conditions, defer, or deny. We're recommending approval as presented. And the applicant's engineer is here tonight.
Would the applicant please come forward?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Charles Yzel with Thomas &amp; Hutton Engineering, and on behalf of Ryan Moore and the county, here to request approval of the application as submitted.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? All right, sir. This is.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. What is the exterior, just out of curiosity, what is the exterior of this building going to be?
I believe it's going to be hardy board. Can you, can you zoom in, Maurice? Okay. What it is, it's a, it's like a stone, on an architect, it's a stone bottom, and then it'll be like a wood panel for the remainder of it, and then a shingle roof.
Is that the shingle roof? Okay.
Yes, sir. And we have a photograph of a, do you have the photograph we supplied of the?
No, I don't believe it.
Okay. There was another building built in Georgia recently that we can, that shows the building.
The elevations in the site plan or in the packet shows that it's a fiber cement lap siding and a cultured stone veneer on the bottom.
Right, yes, sir, yeah, hardy board.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Not any, you don't answer.
His lips are sealed. All right. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this application, please come forward. Hearing none, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this application, please come forward. Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the application, SP 4588 as presented. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving SP 4588 as amended or as approved, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else, staff? All right, folks.